Also, there's going to be four minutes. Last minutes, we're attempting to send the strength forward. Maybe we need to do that more. See this? Seven miles, many more decorations in the space of the hearing interest. Thank you. Seven to twenty-four planning applications is considered only that. We will again look at the performance of the areas. This is all planning needs. I'll send it to you.
Hello Chair, can you hear me? I'm afraid you're not coming through very loud and clear to me, but I'm assuming you've queued me up for the first planning application, is that correct?
I have.
Okay, okay, I'll go ahead with it. So, this one for a single-story side extension. Basically, the plot in question is the blue-marked plot in the centre of the map there, corner of Woodlands Drive and Shelley Way. So if we go down to the first picture, that's the sort of Woodlands Drive side of it. It's a corner house there, and if we could see the next picture. That's the Shelley Way side, so that's the south side, and it's actually the front of the house in effect, as that's the address on Shelley Way. So if we could go to the next bit. So on the top there, the top row, that's the existing on the left, and circled with the orange on the right, the view, as I said, from the south side there, the front of the house in effect on Shelley Way, and you can see the extension with the roof lights on the right there. Next row down is the existing sort of east side of things, so that's the back showing the extension there, or the additional extension there with the orange circle again. So if we could go on to the next bit. So just the same materials as for the same to match, and again, circled in orange, existing on the left, and the new sensory room and extra WC on the right there. And I think that's it for that one. Yep, so back to you Chair.
Thank you. A lot of points on that. I've been done those by a team, Matt, so. There's any point, it's a score. Now, we got my sport. Okay, thank you. On to being, Matt.
If we can go onto the top of the next one, yep, super. So the plot there is, as you can see, another single-story extension. It's on the end of Green Lane, near where it doesn't quite upweave with Earthway. That's the building in question, and you'll note there's a garage on the right, so very square, at the present with the garage on the right. Again, materials to match. The plot diagram there with the green circle this time showing the extension in question, so it's basically at the back of the house. So yeah, if you see the southeast elevation, that'll be the back of the house. So yeah, if we could go on to the next bit. So just to confuse you, I'm afraid the existing and proposed rear elevation are actually on the left-hand column for this one. So you can see the existing situation, top left there, and below that is the proposed rear elevation, i.e. the back of the house, and on the right-hand side there, southwest elevations, and again, the larger extension showing through there. You can see the garage on the left there, and it's the right-hand side with the roof light that's the new larger extension there. So if we go down to the next one. So yeah, these next to the top of your screen there, so the other side, again with that newer larger extension with the roof light on the left-hand side there, and below that is the front of the house, and basically it's only the sort of little bit above the garage that's visible from the roadside in effect. And I believe that's it for that one. So back to you Chair. Oh no, we have got the plans, yeah, the room plans. So in this one, it's the front of the house with the bay windows there at the top of your screens, and at the back, the bottom there, is the proposed new layout with the kitchen on the bottom left there and dining room next to it. Okay, thank you, back to you Chair.
Thank you. Now, we get all this thought. Okay, thank you. On to the law. On to the other.
Yep, thank you Chair. So you've got two numbers on your agenda together here, because it is basically the same actual changes, but there's one for the advertising, one for the actual changes particularly to do with the roller shutter. So the plot in question is, as is being helpfully pointed out by the cursor, the blue, long thin plot there. So if we go down to the corner, I'm sure it's a familiar sight to you all. So the shop in question is on the left there, and just to put into context, the picture of it showing opposite the Tesco Express on the right, other side, shop on the right, Tesco Express on the left, other side of Norwich Road. Yep, so if we see the first diagram. So the black and white picture here shows the, I say proposed, this is a retrospective because it's already in situ, but the thing to note here is that the illuminated sign is the only thing in colour there, everything else in black and white. So that's an illuminated sign within the window, as well as the external silage, as I said, and also part of this application is the roller shutter fixtures in effect, which we'll come to in a second. So yeah, if we can go down to the next one. So yeah, again, this is on the left-hand side showing the roller shutter details with it in a down position and the profile of that. So it is retrospective, so if we go down to the next one. I'm afraid with the vagaries of the new Breckland online planning application viewing system, I haven't been able to actually get the historic buildings consultant's comments. I can't see them unfortunately at the moment, they don't seem to let me want to view that. I'm not sure anybody else has been able to view that, but as I said, just to note that they are there, but I can't view them at the moment, I'm afraid. So if we could just go down to the next pictures which show the signage in question. So you've got sign above the shop, the shop window signage, and again, top left there, you can see the illuminated part of the sign, which is, as I say, inside the window, in effect, within that. So if we go down to the next one, showing the roller shutter down position on the left and sort of up on the right. So if we could just see the text as well. So details of the size of the signs are shown there. So the LED sign, it is an intermittent one, internally lit within the window there, and that concludes that, back to you Chair.
Thanks for all the comments. Cheers. No. Down in front. There's a good one on the front. Here we go. Yeah. I think this one should object to the form of the parents. It totally takes it so now to the area. It is in my mind, the area provides King's part of the way up. He's a sort of. And the noise in the lights in the bar, and the reason has been walking about, the lights in the background is too loud, and yet he's had nothing else. And that was finally to say, no issues, that you go ahead with it. And it totally is fast shutters in front of it. Another problem is the historical. Completely nice. I know there's no speaker bar, which probably means that. The right as long as it is where the toll there is, the lighting sign is still there. The lights are in the area. Thank you. Square the cell, please. Matt.
Cheers, thank you. I completely agree with Stuart. It's absolutely not appropriate in the conservation area. Frankly, it's ugly. Earl Street is one of the best preserved streets we have in Telford. The sign itself is garish, but I don't think that we can really comment too much on that. It says, I may have misread this wrong, it says the facial sign is not illuminated, yet they're blasting it with almost floodlight staging level of light. So the sign's not illuminated, but the rest of the building is by the light they put underneath it. I think it's absolutely appalling, and I think we should be against it, especially considering it's a heritage zone.
Thank you. Any other comments?
But one thing. Okay. But this is proportionally, I mean, proportionally sized, the view in the shop itself. The sign is like other, other than that. You could have just built another shop on that side. And this is not a conservation area, so I agree with the whole movement in that. And I did, I would see that they do have a role. And it did, I didn't really see the. So it doesn't, you can't say that this on sign itself is of one of these. Do it. It's by the step. So I'll.
One, two, three, four. If you're wrong, I really do want to be a perspective of the application. If we let it get along, this one, what's this? I mean, you dive into. Down maybe. It was through the. The shadows are in the store. They can play on the left side. Thank you. In the last, it is only in fact where the shop is located, by the most of the store. Having a very short, but close to the store, and I'm working here so much. I don't ever get it, which one I'm here. And the fact that they don't have anything to find is really the worst of the situation. We always struggle with this, and it's like, we're always trying to find a very, I'm seeing it all the time. Years back, the shop, and then blasted out that way, all over the living room, fast. It's just getting round. So I'm gonna get us there. One of the things I was thinking about was not material considerations. So it's probably the more effects, heritage assets, because there's not many of these buildings, but you're right. I think it is a very prominent part, and I'm going through with old buildings in it. And the others, I think it would be very difficult to go with a park. It's the main issue about it. So are there any other minutes that I'd make for?
I'm seeing that. This is the. By the way. Even some of us. So we say that's how it's going. And when I understand that. It's a bargain. Singing. The protection. Which. For five.
Okay, then if you can, because I have a comment. Both of all. Shall I answer the other? Yes, please. Since you know, many others. Okay, lucky. Okay, it's the next one we'll be doing, Matt.
Again, I'm afraid I couldn't hear that. Are we ready for the next application, 11:58?
Yes, please.
Yep, so this is proposed change of use from the diner to adult gaming centre, which is one of those that doesn't fit into any category as such, or any of the standard categories anyway. So this, from their design and access statement, they're saying we're not talking about structural changes, external changes. It will be basically a change of use, an increase of one of employment, as they say. Now, there is in this design and access statement, the statement that the application only reduces the cafe-restaurant offering by 1% and increases the Swedish generous offering by 1%. I think it's worth noting that this refers to 1% of a total town centre unit, so it's not talking about a reduction of 1% in the amount of restaurants. So it's a reduction of the restaurant offer from 11 to 10, so a 10% reduction in effect. Can we move on to the next bit? Yep, so again, the plot that I'm sure is very familiar to you all, Market Place Cage Lane there, and you can see, again, not that you need to. If we go down to the picture, we can see the building in question, the Norfolk Diner. So on the right of the Norfolk Diner is the existing gaming centre, marked by the sort of cyan-coloured round blob there with the site in question, the Norfolk Diner with the red, nine-foot one. So if we go down to the next bit. So this again is from their submission, saying that they've got, in the centre there is their blue block, saying that the nearest other adult gaming centre is over 200 metres away, and then there's, and they've also included just the one other betting shop they found within that radius of just over 100 metres away. Can we go down to the actual plans there? Thank you. So again, the actual layout is in effect not changing. It's simply the top half of that, the two buildings in effect, is, as marked in red, is proposed to be changed to arcades, all of that, in addition to the existing arcade below that, rather than the existing restaurant and kitchen use. And just a note that when I checked this, there were six negative comments opposing this from members of the public. Thank you, back to you Chair.
I'm sure that we've been having problems. I'm not, no issues. The Norman, because the Norman is now, they've run, and said that for a lot of time, hardly any of you have done it in a responsible manner. I would most rather keep the start in it. Use every other of the habits in it too. I find my dear. I would most rather they'd been produced. I'll tell you, she's there, and then she's. What you do is like the very bodies. Thank you, Matt. And so.
Yeah, I have a couple of points of view on this. I do appreciate the public have written in with concerns. I think that's always great when they do take an interest in that. My slight caveat to that is, it's okay people complaining that it's going to become a gambling hub, but where were those people supporting it when it was a diner? That might be the only financial thing they can do. They may not be able to afford running that business as a diner anymore. They're going for what's lucrative, which could be the slots that they have there. So if people don't support the business, and then they make a business decision to change, I don't really think anyone has the right to moan about that. I also, I really don't want, as Chris said, to see an empty place right opposite our market, or opposite to the right of it. It also doesn't clarify what games, I think the context is really important. If that was a retro arcade, I think everyone would be loving it. But because they're calling it adult gambling centre, it's got a very negative title to it. However, I do also agree with the other side. I don't want to see a gambling centre slap-bang opposite our market where we have a lot of footfall through. It's not a very good look. It's not the look we want, especially near where lots of young people go by that route. But I don't feel we necessarily have too much of a choice to object. I wouldn't like to see it there, but I think we maybe should have done more to support it when it was a diner in that case then.
Yep, I'm amazed how few comments have been logged on the formal planning website, considering the sort of fraud there was on social media, and this has been promoted in the press as well. There's six comments so far, so you know, I hope there might be a few more being registered. But having sat and read them, I appreciate completely the frustration. I don't think any of us would prefer to see a gambling establishment over a diner. We would all rather have a diner. But the owners of the diner say it's not profitable for it to remain, and therefore they're closing their business. That's a business decision, and therefore they're looking at what might be profitable, and given their history, as Chris says, at running a gaming establishment, that's the route they've gone down, which again, I think is very sad. It's a sign of the times that that's a profitable business. I'd much rather it was used for something else. But from a purely planning point of view, and I don't know if Mark can hear me at all, I can't think of a single planning objection to this. We can't object to it and turn it down because we don't like it, as much as we would like to do that. But from a planning point of view, in the current law and proposals that we have, if the owner of that facility say a business decision is we can't afford to run a diner, we're going to turn it into this other legal business, which is gambling, we are powerless to stop that. It's as simple as that. And I think for everybody saying that the council is doing this, or the council is encouraging it, is completely wrong. This is, you know, Economics 101, this is what they've decided to do. So unless officers tell us otherwise, we have no grounds to object.
Do you want me to make a comment at that stage, Chair?
Yeah, please do.
I mean, it's not really for me to advise you on policy or your choices on this as such, but yeah, I'm not sure. Assuming you did want to object, I'm not sure on what grounds you could that would be a material consideration. The existing site clearly does have planning permission to be there. Yeah, as I said, I would just remind you that it would have to be a material consideration if you wanted to object on planning grounds and have a reasonable prospect of that being sort of taken into serious consideration by Breckland. Thank you.
Thank you. Situation here. It's a lot like heaven. Since we do what the objection would still be considerations. Interestingly, the Norfolk Diner, heavy objection is the first one, because it's a negative competition, but it is also all night and stuff. As it happens, we're going to have two souls, absolutely, you know, in the source. One is climbing, one is on our side. And it isn't just one hour, okay, we've got two, we need to cross. So you know, it's suggestive to say that the establishment is 200 metres away. There's a lot of opportunity for people to take on the minimums now, one room. However. I can't find any in any kind of consideration. But I don't want to say that, if I can. Go again, still, Stuart. Should be back to the business. Well, it's almost me, it's all the city. It's certainly is not struggling. It's asking with, done this, it's better, but it has to, I was doing. It's concerned that it's another account. But I'm seeing that. Certainly. And the concern is, you know, that there is a. So the town, and she was starting, she must be here. It's just another asset that's all the way down there, and scanning all in a certain way. Obviously, it's not bad in city, you know, as Terry said, it's not the part of it. It's that. We'd like to look at it. That hasn't been what you said, but you would be arguing from the end of all. Please do one gap in. Previous advice was normalised. The sort of cheese that is not all of these. I should tell you.
Thank you Chair. There is a concern, I think, among this council that objections to certain planning applications keep getting turned down. And in that light, I don't think it's a very good idea for us to turn down an application when, as is apparent, there are no material considerations to turn it down on. It just makes us look weak, and makes it more likely we will have good grounds to oppose to applications turned down in the future. Thank you.
You broke your teeth.
I do agree with what you're saying, Stuart, about introduction of new adult gaming centre to the town. Doesn't really reflect well on what we, our aims are to support people with that. However, when you look at what's there, it is already slots. It has been for many years, and as was mentioned earlier, it's been quite successful. It's what's held that diner afloat for many years, because they've been struggling financially with just the diner. We're not saying we'll put another adult casino in. They're just extending the existing casino, or slot machines. As was mentioned, they haven't had any, that we're aware of, they haven't had any major problems. Yes, there are one people that use it. Unfortunately, it's one of the people that use, the free bookies in Well Street, and the slots, which we didn't want to put in, the new one, but that just went through. We didn't have material there, and I think we'd look rather foolish in saying, well, we won't allow this to go because, you know, it's on a principle when there is no material, and it's already there.
Thank you, Matt.
Push it so out of broken. Just a quick one. The only slight concern I have, I have a general feeling is we can't vote against, we would have to solve, support this. I would sort of hope if we could add the caveat or a condition that they try to keep the front of the shop, of the job, as in-keeping as it is at the moment. Usually comes hand in hand with gambling and slots, it's bright flashing light. And I just don't, if we can request, I don't know how it's going to work, but if we can request to keep it as in-keeping with the current design as possible, because if they paint that garish orange and bright lights everywhere, it's going to ruin the aesthetic of that street. So if they can sort of keep it as in-keeping as much as they could, that would be great.
So because you're a chip shop.
I forgot it was next to a chippy, I'll take that back.
Just a question really for Mark. Normally, the only option we have is objector or supporter. I would be reluctant to say that we're a supporter, because we're not. Do we have an option to pass no comment on the grounds that we can't find any planning objections, but we don't like it? I'd feel much more happy giving a neutral stance, because I certainly don't support it, but you know, we can't be an objector.
Yeah, I haven't actually had experience of using the new system of Breckland since the website has changed, so I'm not sure if this is still the case. But from previous experience, you can, in effect, say what you like. You don't actually have to necessarily support or object. There used to be another category of simply comment. So as I say, unfortunately, because I'm not involved with that side of things anymore, I'm not aware of the mechanics at the moment, and I think Alan might be able to answer that. But yeah, you used to be able to say, just make a comment. You'd also have the option, of course, of simply not making a comment via the website, certainly, or not making a formal comment by this process. You could not respond if you wish. So I think both of those options are still open to you, unless Alan has, who, as I say, has more experience of actually inputting the comments, can say anything on that further.
I'll certainly explore this. If I cannot. These lights, I'll certainly. Explain this, why are you there?
So something along the lines of. It's a point of, of change, you know, it's to become a game center. But do you all work on this, I understand? But also, whether we would like to keep the street scene the same in the. Let's say, a non-garbage farm. This is.
Yeah, I should perhaps add that, you know, advertising change like that, like the previous application would, I think in this case would have to have a further application. So you could consider the signage at that point. So you could, you know, consider the signage at that point if they decide to change that.
However, I would say that will be for those who wish to support that. Call some action. Wait up, what do you know? Any suggestions? Okay, thank you. The next one, anyone welcome?
Yep, thank you, Chair. So back to a household one for this one. So we're talking eleven sixty five. So it's, it's a little bit complicated this because there's three different things going on at once. Oh, can we just hold that back for a second? Thanks. So we've got ground floor extension to the rear, a first floor extension above an existing garage. And a flat roof being added, having a pitched roof added over it. With, with roof lights there. So we're talking McKenzie Road. So if we can go down to the map, please. So you can see the plot in question there. It's again, it's on a corner. Opposite of the woodland there. So if we can go down to the picture, I, as I said, because it is a bit complicated, I, I've added on the next two pictures. A very rough outline of where the relevant extensions are going to go. So you've got the bit above the garage there in the top picture. And if you just sort of can note or bear in mind that the NW on the left there is the northwest extension. So that's the one that you're looking at in the top picture with the actual door in it and the garage. And then southwest will be looking directly on to the sort of short end of the garage. And then the next picture there shows the rear extension. Sorry, we've gone past it. Just quickly show the picture again for a second. You've got the rear extension on the left there and the pitch roof above the existing room on the right. Okay, so if we could show, see the plan now. So what you're looking at there is again, the corner plot outlined in red. And when you look at the building, the, the bit with the red walls is the totally new ground floor extension. On the left at the bottom there is the existing garage, which would have an extension over it. And on the right or top is the bit that's going to have a pitched roof on where the existing flat roof is. So if we could then go down to the next bit. So, uh, yeah, northwest elevation. So that's the bit where I was saying you're looking at the door there. And in all of these, the new bits are the bits that are coloured in and the existing bits are. Basically just white. So on the right of your picture, you've got the extension above the garage. And on the left, you've got the pitch roof above the existing room or existing extension on the left of your picture there. So if we can go to the next one. So in this case, you're looking at the rear of the house. In effect, you've got the pitch roof in front of you. And the extension on the left. So on the, the left is actually the rear of the house. If, if you compare to the front door, I suppose it's, it's a bit. Hard to tell which is which when you're talking about a corner plot, I suppose. So if we could go down to the next picture, you can see there. You've got the extension at the back there and the bit above the garage on the left, pitch roof on the right. And next one, I think that'll be the last, next one's the last one, I think. Yep, last of the pictures. So again, you've got the extension on the right there. If we can have a look at the text. So the, the, the material's not exactly the same as the existing in all cases, but you can see the, the detail there. If you wish to go through them, there is a bit, as I said, some variety from the existing finishes. And if we could go down, I think there's, I think we've got one more bit for this, have we? No, that's it for that one. Thank you. Back to you, Chair.
Okay, Mark, any comments?
Looks bad.
Okay, this slide, this management policy is proved. Any other suggestions? Thank you. I think that's it, Mark.
You've got one chair, a tree one chair, if you want me to talk that through as well.
Apologies, Thomas, to tree, you know, in a fraction of those.
So yeah, again, a familiar sight to you. We're talking between the old Berry Road and Button Island. Blue plot, uh, blue outline to the plot by the river there. And the building is just to the left of that blue plot. So the, uh, yeah, if we, we'll go down to the next one. If you look at the black arrow there, that will be sort of relevant on the next picture. That's the view from the next picture. But for the moment, if we just look at the two trees in question. You've got a silver birch, um, which is on the left, as you see it there, I think, and the willow on the right. So we're talking about the next view you'll see is from the car park. Looking towards the building in question. So you've got your, you know, the cinema would be, and the shops would be above your. Picture there. And if we go down now to the photo. And the, the black arrow is basically showing where that view is coming from. So you're looking in the car park and you can see the silver birch on the right and the willow on the left. And it's, um, it's not a tree, they're not got TPOs on them, but it is in a conservation area, not, not being removed. It's a sort of crown lifting, so removing of the lower branches. And I should also point out that it's not actually, there is a scope on the website to add a comment, but they're not asking for comments. On the planning application, it is supposed to be for information only. Back to you, Chair.
Anything else? I think this is one of the guests, one of the students, somebody who is maintenance on trees, but my kids. So it should be one of the spots I'm concerned. Okay, thanks, Mark.
Thank you, Chair. I wish you well with the rest of the meeting. Bye. Cheers.
Good one, thank you. Okay, all senators, what's went before this? I don't think it's not anything. And also the fight to, or items to be reversed, the greatest that the partnership. I don't believe. There's one, maybe you, also six twenty four, next one, actions on previous meetings.
I was coming, I think this is the. We all have a, all around the, around the ability. We, we go and look what the. The living of the December. We were asked for the permit, saw the area in January, they just want something input from us and I think they actually do some things. So one of the things that I have to ask you is, when would you like that meeting? Because they've been sending these emails reminding me that we each do go next to them and they were not to give us. To develop the data. So in the case of the. These then go off the end of the month. If there's any debt, if I can stick them to ask us. That gives me February, that will be at the end.
One of the main concerns why I pushed it back as well, it's dark at about four o'clock. So it's completely pointless walking around the streets because there's no street lights. As well, which doesn't help one bit. As, as I told them on the last one. So yeah, I think February, February time would be better.
So if we wait for the end of February, when.
Yeah. Thank you.
This is the type of. Okay, twenty four weeks, nothing, making it to that, they're high on the question of the. Anytime, you know, but the. Getting this, sorry, the chain of use for getting, we invite, that's just. And also the media and else, we never ever have anything from this planning meeting. Uh, on our. Mediums or the same way that we've supported. I just wonder whether it's wise to do, in, in the, well, we need to understand our thought process. And while that's all businesses, we don't necessarily support the company business. Do we think that's a good idea?
Well, it's a good idea, but if you can put something out, also refer to the fact that this is recorded. And they can look at our comments on here. Where the comments have been made, the reasons for no material consideration to whatever. Now, going on the points that Cherry said, man, everybody. All the way around. So refer people to watch the flaming video if they came to it.
Yeah, I'd be, I'd be reluctant to sort of just put it out. We don't do it as a normal. Uh, and yes, it is. It can be looking at this problem, for sure, but we should be treating this the same as any other planning application. We should, we're taking more service and, and they can access this. As. Says, they can access it at any time.
Yeah, you want to burn the party. And I was wondering if the latest on, uh. Our video, so to everybody, I can't. Said, please, our. You can see how you look discussed and really support it. Okay.
You can first, you can first respond.
We don't. Yeah, that's cool. If you haven't been, uh, sure, they're asking me to view what we do. So when they do accuse us, we like it, we've got opportunities to view it. And others, and a long story, we can point out where. Okay, if there's nothing else, I can run onto the. I'll just bring them.
That's what I gave, when I gave my seat to the mayor. Just, I don't know if we, did we agree we were doing a statement? Or am I just going under, am I going to be arguing something? And I shall digress. I also don't know.
Hey, it's. Nor do I.
I'm physically feeling involved once, but I don't, do I know why, you know, from many side of it. And since I'm on the one of many, that this is a particular special one, patients, just now, I have a question.
Um, yeah, it's really, I'm just like, probably Terry could probably have anything more on this. Is it common practice for businesses to slap on social media that their revenue is somewhere in Thetford without actually having a plan? Um, on the return of the new. And the capital castle street.
That's another one.
Um, the thing with planning is if you know your, uh, planning policy, and I would imagine in both of those cases, they've paid for. Planning consultants or agents, they will get planning permission. So from a business point of view, they want to get in early and, you know, it's a gamble. Excuse the pun, because they want to start promoting it and get, you know, the odds are they will get planning permission, simple as that. And so it's not, um, it's not that common, but it does happen, you know? I think the bigger question we need to be asking ourselves as a council is. What do we need to be doing to make places like expanded gambling centres and Mercra and all the rest of it? What do we need to be doing to make them close down? Like, you know, we've got to be improving, we've had, I've seen this stuff you've posted, Stuart. But we've had four Thetford town centre businesses closed within the last couple of weeks. How do we respond to that as a town council? You know, I don't want to see CEX and, you know, I remember Bright House when they were here and I remember all, you know, Coles and all the rest of them. I don't want them in my town either. But we've got a responsibility as a town council to respond to that. What's to propose?
The answer to that is rather lost. There won't be. Then it, it is really sort of digging into that, because even when it goes, we don't know it's not planning. So we tried this in the last, say, there are two men in Bonn type, um, visiting the town. So, you know, this is something that we can perhaps charge because it is exactly the same in the key, um. The key something is really in, in Norwich, pretty wild, but where they had so many, uh, lady, my. Eighty, we still have little ones out there. And so they asked for, um, any planning services. To be stopped because of the utility of the central business. Now, when you consider the size of town centre and the amount of facilities you can now down it, maybe, I think we've got a care system there. It's just that anybody who puts that living in town has to do some planning. The licenses are not keen to do it. It's the same with the off, the, uh, the off service for Drake. So I think the only ways to go for the place to see it and ask there to be to. Any other comments before we, yes, start?
I think we, we all can hear a little, a little. Um, I, I, I agree then. I think if it was for, uh, a property, we will go through. It's just another business that fits the ticks the boxes, the planning problems. Um, I think I know what you mean. Um, I've, this one, obviously more ideal. We have another one across. Right across from the set location. And for you to see the ratio of number of, uh, their target businesses in town. What this one's going to do is all and the track business from the current ones that are existing. So it's hard to argue, but like, so we got the issue, we can argue on the, on that and then they'll just begin to the bubble. You know, we got it, and, and all that stuff. Uh, it's hard to reply on this one, that this will cause them to be greedy, but the result of them want to feed people. I don't think that's going to apply. Well, we can use it enough. Now, obviously, it's not going to apply on one, but we can certainly do our research. We'll put research together and say, this is how many people that have mentioned. This is number of, of, of places that they were for this, with this service, with the location. This is bound to many and is saturated markets and therefore is on fine. Perhaps you start thinking about things in that way and, and pointing that out to the, to, to the planning department, to Breckland. I don't know if you will, Terry, perhaps you know this better than I have, because we've been Breckland. But it's, it's a bit, it might be a stronger of an argument. If it is detrimental to the current businesses, obviously, we all want to bring business into town and we don't want to see the empty spaces. But what's it does it does to us to open a new business, one that is, and of course, three or four others are in the city there. We want more business or plans, a simple house.
Yeah. Yeah, I know what you're saying, but, um. I don't think that's a planning consideration that something is detrimental to other businesses in town. I could be wrong, but I don't think they take that into, into account at all. I mean, if we've got that new gym that's opening up just opposite another gym. There, there's nothing to stop them doing that. There's no planning reason to do it. And having got, going to planning, um. The planning meetings, things are dismissed because there's no planning, material planning reason for it to. To be objected to. So, um, I, I understand what you mean that it, you know, we don't want lots of, I, I quite agree. We don't want lots of gambling. I think we've probably got too many as it is, but. But that, it, it won't do any good to say there's too many. It's not going to make any difference.
Yes, thank you.
Very quickly, um, I, I agree. I think what you, you wanted said before, they might not, they might not, uh, on paper. See it, anything reasonable post which, perhaps we have to start fighting. The, the reasons, the, 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 the planning, the packaging as it is. And just say, look, for this particular town, we have X amount of gambling rates, X amount of jeans, X amount of restaurants, X amount of cars. This is the amount, total amount, the amount that this in the town can handle before it has an impact, it's very young teenage. And maybe I just thought, we threaten rather than trying to hold a case, I guess, based on business by business, always, which is going. Keep fighting sent that in the circle, we keep pushing, we push it away. Perhaps this is something we need to work with, but the power environment sets as a president, second form, that feels, for all income. It's just a future, so I don't know.
Thanks, Mark. Is it, I'm just not aware of what, what poses, what involves on Breckland. Is anybody more than I said? So this may be a question that, no.
It's, it's there.
It's planning.
I'm not planning.
There's only consideration. So what we're committing about is, do you, in that policy, particularly that kind of thing? So that's not really a business for this, uh, committee. It's really something that if he wanted to do, we would have to take it to council meeting to agree. As a council, we'd like Breckland to consider keeping the infant parts for the amount of gambling, the stars from some town. That's, that's what we're going to do, absolutely, because it is why I'm concerned, it's not a planned consideration. We find that I'm a bit of a drivel, because. No. So if you're not me, then I'm not a, 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 one of my peers, but if you're going to say, we're doing our house like this. Unless we're doing it in the house, I think it is, Breckland.
Thank you.